Good evening, folks, and welcome to the December 14, 2020, meeting of the Gofftown Select Board. Meeting tonight is being conducted remotely via the WebEx platform. I have more details on that shortly. I'm going to call a meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So right now, I'm going to read the right-to-know law meeting checklist, which is required with each of these virtual meetings. As Chair of the Gofftown Select Board, due to the COVID-19 outbreak, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we're doing several things. A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with a different access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The town is utilizing the WebEx platform for this electronic meeting. Public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting by dialing the following telephone number. Area code 603-766-5646 and using the participant code 785-645, followed by the pound sign. Item B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public on how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. Item C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with telephone access, please call area code 603-384-3624 for assistance. And B, adjoining the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note, all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll call of attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. This is Carlos Adams, and there is no one in the room with me.
Kelly Boyer, no one in the room with me.
Peter?
Peter George Jackson, no one in the room.
Mark?
Mark Lemay, nobody in the room with me.
And finally, Chat?
Chat Bowen, no one in the room with me.
Thank you. All right, let's see, get through the agenda. First item on the agenda is the acceptance and correction of minutes. We have both public and non-public minutes from the December 7, 2020 Select Board meeting.
I'll make a motion. We accept the 12:07 2020 public and non-public minutes with corrections if need be.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Kelly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes are accepted as presented, 5:00. Let's see, we have a meeting with the Parks and Rec Director. We also have some non-public items that we need to discuss tonight. And the first non-public comment session at 6:10 is now 6:04, so we've got some time to take care of some of the items. Derek, why don't we get into your administrative report?
Thank you. At Tab 5A, you have your meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. The Select Board tonight, tomorrow morning, it's listed for hazard mitigation planning. That meeting has been canceled and postponed to January 26 of 2021. Parks and Rec Commission is meeting Wednesday night. I'm sorry, let's get back to Tuesday. Tuesday, 7:00 PM, Budget Committee is remote.
Yep, I'll be there.
Thank you. Wednesday, 6:30 PM, Library Trustees Remote.
I'll be there.
Wednesday, 7:00 PM, Parks and Rec Commission.
I will be there.
Thursday at 7:00 PM is the Planning Board.
I'll be there.
Thursday, the Village Piscataquag River Pedestrian Ad Hoc Committee. That meeting is actually going to be at 6:30. I talked to Andy Catterett today, but that meeting will be at 6:30 on Thursday.
I'll be at that as well.
And then there are no meetings scheduled for next week. There's a couple items about early closings and buildings being closed. At your next page, you have Consent Agenda. Employee Status Reports. You have Police Officer Merit Increase, and then you have another Police Officer with a merit increase. You have a part-time firefighter to EMT, hired a full-time firefighter to EMT. And then again, another part-time firefighter to EMT, hired to full-time firefighter to EMT. You have a resignation of a part-time AEMT, resignation of a Call Firefighter to AEMT, and a resignation of another Call Firefighter to AEMT. I'd also like to add some employee status forms that came in this afternoon over at DPW. There's a new hire for a full-time laborer that was approved a couple of weeks ago by the board. There's also a new hire for a seasonal CDL driver and a new hire for a seasonal laborer. You have rights to inter West Lawn Expansion Cemetery, Section 6, Lot 104. West Lawn Expansion, Section S2, Lot 150. And then you have the 2021 weekly rates for all employees for health and dental insurance.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Chat?
Second.
I have some questions.
Yep, second, second by Mark. Okay, we have a motion and a second open for discussion. Go ahead, Peter.
Okay. On Thursday, the bus is very cold, closing early, Dave, before Christmas. Are we doing that at the Town Hall, having the pass?
You have Town Hall has closed in the past early on Christmas Eve. Normally, the board makes that decision. I had not brought that request forward to you. So if the board would want to make that decision, you could do that after the consent agenda, if you'd like.
I have no problem with that personally.
Without the consent agenda, I just don't understand that. My point here would be, I don't want to say that we're all castings, the libraries closing early, the future. That's the only thing we all do the same thing, and that's just like, make sure that we're going to cover that.
Okay.
So you want to wait there till after, is what you're saying?
Yeah, if you do that after the consent agenda, you can do that as a separate motion to close early.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, call a vote. I vote yes, Kelly. Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
That motion passes 5:00.
So if it be... Yeah, so the motion I would ask for is to... I'd ask you to keep us open until 1 o'clock and close at 1 o'clock. I think that's what we've done historically.
Do you want to make that motion, Peter? Thank you, Peter. Anybody second?
I'll second.
I think I heard Chat.
Yep.
A motion by Peter and a second by Chat. Any discussion on the motion? A call, a roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
That motion passes 5:00. It's now 6:10. It's their first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone out there that you can see, Derek, that would like to make a comment at this time? Or is there anyone joining us that would like to make a comment? Now is your opportunity to speak.
There's nobody on the telephone line.
Okay. I will move on. Yes?
I have a thing from the Gofftown Fire Rescue Association. It's about Santa Claus coming through town. You want me to make that now, or you want to wait for new business?
Yeah, I don't see announcements, so yeah, let's go ahead. Mark, why don't you do that now? We'll take up announcements.
So the Gofftown Fire Rescue Association is pleased to announce that Santa will be coming through town December 19, 2020. I am told that Santa had a recent meeting with the Easter Bunny, who reported his adventures in the spring were wonderful. Because there were so many people waiting for the Easter Bunny, Santa has decided to give Saturday a try. Santa will follow the same route as was published, okay? And if you go to the Gofftown Fire Rescue Association website, they have all the streets broken down as to where we will be at what time. We're going to basically start around 9 o'clock, and we'll get done, I think, 4:30 or 5 o'clock will be the last roundabout with Santa Claus. Santa Claus, as you know, will definitely not stop. If he stops, he'll be in the bucket. The pandemic COVID-19 has kind of changed our plans a little bit. So please don't be offended if Santa Claus doesn't stop. But he will be there to say hi to all the kids and make sure everybody has a wonderful Christmas. That's from the Gofftown Fire Rescue Association, Carlos.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any other announcements from other board members that you want to share at this point? Seeing none, next item on the agenda is the Parks and Rec Director. This is at Tab 4 in your packet. Rick, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
How are you doing?
Doing very well.
Okay, you're here to talk to us about bid results and a recommendation for an all-purpose cedar.
Yes. Just to give you an update on that. We were working through a company called First Product, which is the company that makes an air vader. And we sent out bid requests to three companies. Grassland Corporation out of New York, a Star Tractor Company out of New Jersey, and a Turf Product Corporation out of Connecticut. And what we got back is we got back one bid, and that was from Turf Product Corporation. The bid was for $14,217.35. That company is basically the New England authorized distributor for this product. Currently, right now, St. Anselom's College has this same unit, and speaking with Kim Britton over there, absolutely loves the product, gives them time to actually get some seed in the ground during active time of use. So that kind of mirrors our true need in our area. Other towns, the town of Hopkinton, town of Raymond, the city of Claremont, and then St. Paul's School and Southern New Hampshire School also has this same product.
Any questions from board members for Rick on this item?
I recommend the purchasing.
Go ahead, Peter.
With recommendation of the... I'm making a motion that we purchase the cedar with the recommendation of the Parks and Rec.
Thank you. A motion by Peter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chat. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly. Kelly, you have to unmute.
Yes, sorry.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5:00. We'll move back to the administrative report. We get down through the consent agenda, I believe, Derek. I think around Item 5C, which is the assessor's recommendation.
Yes, it is. In your packet, you have the 2020 Equalization Assessment Data Certification. The assessor is recommending that you sign the 2020 Equalization Municipal Assessment Data Certificate.
And that's the recommendation?
Yes.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion so we can bring it to the floor for discussion?
I'll make a motion. We allow the 2020 Equalization Municipal Assessment Data Certification to move forward.
Thank you, Mark. Second by Peter. Yep, thank you, Peter. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes, Kelly.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5:00. Next is Item 5D.
Yes, I'd ask Danielle to speak to this real quick because she worked with her finance team on this. But just to let the board know, New Hampshire Retirement System, earlier this year, there we were randomly selected for an audit review of our NHRs withholdings and payments over to those. But Danielle can explain the findings that came through.
Hi, Danielle. Good evening, everyone. What you have before you is a copy of the findings, and my memo has a summary there on Tab 5D. What we had were three findings. Two findings were related to reporting within the New Hampshire Retirement System. When we create our files, we have to align them to certain parameters so that the file can be read, and each field has to be in a certain placement. So there are two changes they've asked us to make in relation to how those reports go through. And so those were easy changes. There was one change that's going to require a correction to payroll that had been submitted to New Hampshire Retirement in 2018. And that will result in a refund to the town, which will subsequently result in a refund to the employee. It was a small payroll, and it only impacted 15 employees. So that correction will be submitted to New Hampshire Retirement this week, and then we will get the refund check and disperse that out for the employee portion as soon as possible. Overall, the auditor did say that they were very happy with the results, considering this is something we do have to report for all employees every month, and that they only found the one error when they looked back. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Danielle. All in all, it looks like a good audit report. Questions from board members for Danielle?
Nope, I will just comment. Keep up the good work. Great job.
Yep, that was a good audit. Anybody else? Questions from other board members? All right, and we need a motion. Where am I? Actually, do we need action on this, Derek? I'm looking for...
No, this is just an informational item. There's no action required, but we were bringing it to the board to make you aware.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it. Let's see, Item 5E, that is the draft 2020 encumbrance list.
Yes. And I'm going to ask Danielle to share her screen. We do have a little bit of a... There were some revisions that were made today. But annually, as we approach the end of the year, departments have open purchase orders or open contracts that we need to encumber those funds into the next year. You have in your packet a list, and earlier this evening, Danielle sent out a revised list. The purpose for giving this to you a few weeks before we ask for an approval. We'll be asking for an approval on the encumbrance list on December 28. We'll have a brief meeting that night to do that and any other last-minute business that comes up. But this is really to give the board an opportunity to ask any questions they may have, look through it. That way, we can either answer those questions tonight or get those answers for you on the 28. But Danielle, if you can share. And... Danielle, can you go to View and go to Full Screen? On the... Yeah. Full screen mode.
So Danielle, this is a lengthy list. If you can just sort of hit the highlights, then we can take questions from board members. How's that? I can't hear you, Danielle. Go ahead, Danielle. Can you hear me?
Danielle, if you go to the top of your shared screen, where there's like an orange bar, if you click, it can come down and you can unmute there.
Got it. Thank you very much. All right, so as you can see, the list is sorted out by department and then in order by PO number. So the highlights that we have for 2020, there are many projects that were delayed due to COVID and what happened this year, whether it was just timing with vendors or things that had to be postponed. So that's what you're seeing before you on this list. The column all the way to the right shows the year-end encumbrance amount that the departments are looking for for these particular items and projects. There are some items that are on this list because they are simply en route, the orders were placed, and perhaps the vendor's manufacturing has been delayed, in which case we have the encumbrance because we're not sure if we are going to receive the product in time to process the invoice for 2020. Even if we receive it in the beginning of January, when we have two warrants going for AP, there is still some question as to whether or not certain items will be received by then. So we've asked departments to put down what they know is coming forward and what the town has committed to. So what we have there are some items like vehicles that were purchased late in the year, uniform items, turnout gear for the fire department. There are still some projects that are waiting to begin. You'll see the different items for DPW resurfacing. The bottom half of the list here continues with part of the fire department and then Parks and Rec, so that's on Page 2. Most of these projects are underway, but for instance, with Parks and Rec, they had some items that just had to be delayed until the spring based on now the snow has fallen, so certain outdoor projects have to wait. And then the third page you see is a lot smaller than the original draft. This is the prior year encumbrances that were for 2019 or older. And these items have been individually discussed with the departments and items that were completed or closed or whatnot can be closed out. Items that are ongoing still remain on this list, so you have a balance at the bottom of that page as well of what's left out there. So if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them or get those answers for you for the next meeting.
Thank you, Danielle. I tried working my way through this. I got about halfway through it, so I know I'm going to need the extra two weeks to look at this. But are there any board members who have any specific items they would like to touch on at this point?
I do.
Go ahead, Peter.
I do. Okay, let's start at the back and go forward, I guess. On the 2019, 7/1, 2019 to 6/30, that was the bus service. How does that go back to 7/19?
I'm sorry, Pete. Can you repeat the question? You're breaking up a little bit.
Okay, I'm going back to the older one. It says bus service, 7/1, 2019 to 6/30 of 2021. How does it go back to 7/1 of 19 if that's nearly our two-year contract?
That was a two-year, non-lapsing appropriation approved at Town Meeting in 2019. The transportation program in the past has been done as a non-lapsing appropriation, and it operates on MTA's fiscal year. For the 2021 budget, we started to include that cost of the MTA shuttle service in the operating budget. And so we would have is basically the second half of the year to pick that up, as well as the additional days that were added in 2019, at the end of 2019. And there was the grant to get the additional bus. That way, Gofftown has bus service five days a week now.
Right, thank you. Then, if we're done again, we have stuff going back to 2013, 2014, 2015, 2018, and then 2019. How do we go back to 2013?
So the one lone PO that's in 2013 was for the original implementation of Munis. The one outstanding item that we do have that started to be worked on this year, that IT and Finance was working on at the beginning of the year was the implementation of employee self-service, as well as you'll see in the 2015 PO number 55, citizen self-service. Those modules where people could go on and pull their sewer bill, as well as their tax bill. Those are tied in with the Tyler Content Manager that was purchased this year. That way, we actually store the individual bills as images that people can pull up. And those were all being worked on diligently by IT and Finance, and that project just got delayed a little bit. So I think in 2021, we'll be able to wrap up that project and knock out the remaining funds on that 2013 PO, on that 2015 PO. the remaining funds on that 2013 PO, on that 2015 PO, as well as the PO that's shown on page one, which is PO number 25 for Tyler Content Manager.
So Peter, you still have the floor.
So we're not holding this.
Peter, why don't you go through your items? Let me know when you're done and we'll move on to other, other board members. But why don't you go down through whatever else you have left, Peter?
Okay. Susa signs. That was signs in 2014. That wasn't a lot of money, but it's sitting out there for 2014. I know for sure one of the signs has been done. We never received the bill for it?
No, we got all the bills for it and those signs have been produced. We were going to install this spring at the popcorn stand at St. Lawrence and St. Matthews, but there was a discovery of an error on some of the language with St. Matthews. The actual signs, we were working to correct that and then install all at once rather than to have Susa signs come out and install a couple and then have them mobilized for a second time for just St. Matthews. So that's, that's why that one's been sitting out there.
Okay, and as usual, we always have the question on paving with $1.4 million. Sitting right now, are we expecting some more bills before the end of the year?
Which one? I'm sorry, Peter, which one was that? You were breaking up a little.
The paving bills, the Continental paving.
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
$1.4 million sitting there. And we're waiting on bills. That's a huge lot, that's a huge amount of money they have sitting out there.
Hi, folks.
Let's start with that one.
I think, let's see, Continental, I think it's seven, it's about 800,000. Am I missing one? I think 1.4. 1.4 is the whole, the whole year, the whole encumbrance list, right?
Right.
Yeah, so, yes, totally. Okay, gotcha. So yes, I think we've got just shy of or just over 800,000 for encumbrance. We do, we've got a handful of streets that haven't been built out yet. I think the final paving number is gonna be right around 450 to 475, which will be enough to do almost all of the overlays from, that were reclaimed this year. We've got some sidewalk work that, that'll be picked up again next year. That wasn't finished. And then one, I'm sorry, two streets that were partially shamed this year, but not, they weren't able to get back in time at the end of the year. And then part of Walnut that was scheduled to be done. So the bulk of those, of that encumbrance will be gone by the next time you see this list, I hope. But we do have a handful of streets left out for billing, so should be down sub 500 by the end of the year.
My next one would be, I don't know if you have the sheet in front of you or not. And I'm sure this is probably a typo, but it says special article DPW edition Sullivan Tire Company. I don't think Sullivan Tire had anything to do with a special article.
That is true.
That's my, that's my typo, Pete. I will go ahead and get that fixed. Thanks for catching that.
Good catch. I do have on the DPW edition, though, what we're there, I do on the, on the encumbrance carryovers from last year. You did see one of the two I had was paving for that parking lot. That was paved last week, so that's one of those bills as well that's gonna be coming in. So that one can go away too.
I think I've.
You also have, Peter? Yeah? Any other board members have questions relative to the encumbrance list? We'll have another shot at this two weeks from tonight. Anybody? Any other board members? All right, I don't see any. So this is just informational at this point, right, Derek?
Yes, yep. And if in, in the meantime, like I said, Danielle did email out to board members a revised version. If you have any questions, you could contact the department head directly or contact Danielle or myself and we'll get an answer for you before the 28th.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then. We'll revisit this in two weeks on the meeting on the 28th. Yes.
I've revised my printed it out when she sent it a while ago, so. My, the questions I was coming for were off the bottom.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? We're gonna move on to item 5F, which is the warrant article language for the fire department's Safer Grant. Chief, are you with us?
I am here.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
You have the floor.
So we put together the proposed language for the warrant Safer Article. It's very similar to, actually the same as the last warrant that was put on a few years ago, I believe now. The only difference is the appropriation and the town share you'll see is we'll appropriate the money, but there's actually no share to the town. We anticipate starting, if everything was to go perfectly and this were to go through and we were able to apply for the grant, that wouldn't be until March of next year approximately. We anticipating not hearing until, you know, the June, July standpoint timeframe. Then we wouldn't actively hire somebody until September of next year. That's why the appropriation for the first year would be the 90,000 number here in front of you. This also gives the board the authorization that if it does fail, that the board still is authorized as far as hiring or not hiring people. And that's again, and that's the same exact language that was in the prior warrant article. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or any board members or someone ready, prepared to make a motion?
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, my question would be, if this fails, you still want the authority to go ahead and hire after you've already been told no?
Nope, no, that, no, it would, I would not be hiring. This would not.
I just want to clear that it sounded like you, it sounded like we're saying that even if the voters vote this down, you still want the authority to hire.
No, I think it's voted, if it gets voted down, slip and Georgia, we would not be able to hire.
Okay.
But Pete, I would just mention, I think there, there is, there is the language at the end that says the select board has the ability to control staffing levels within the limits of the operating budget appropriation.
Thank you, Peter.
I just don't want, I still want to leave, I don't want to leave the door open to say, okay, the voters said no, we're gonna go ahead and do it anyway. Whether it's me here at the time or somebody else down the road.
I hear your concern.
No, I didn't get it stated.
Correct, no means, no means no for the current year, correct. We would not hire.
If they say no, until you go back to a special article to undo that, I would think that would be no.
I would say, Pete, in a future operating budget, you could have, you could have somebody, in the case where you had a staffing article like this, that where you're trying to have a grant to hire additional people. Every, every town meeting, you get to ask that question again, whether it be as a special article or it be as part of the operating budget that's put forward by the, by the budget committee.
Yeah.
I don't really, I don't look at it that way. If I was on the budget committee or just a person town and I said no in 2021 and then 2023, they, I think the operating budget, I still think that's overriding the voter, vote, the vote of the town. Any language that says that, I would make a stop.
Derek, did you hear all his comments? I broke up a little bit at the end.
I didn't. I, I guess I would, I would just offer to any of the board members or anyone that's watching. If this article were to fail, if at a future time our current fire chief or another fire chief came forward with, whether it's additional personnel in the operating budget, I think that'd be an appropriate question for legal counsel at that time.
Yeah, and we can deal with it then. Yep. Any other questions from board members on this?
A little motion, close?
Go ahead, Mark.
I'll make a motion that we allow the chief, the fire chief that is, to proceed forward with the Homeland Security Grant for the Safer to hire possibly four additional firefighters in 2021, 22, 23, 24.
I'll second that.
That gives a motion by Mark and a second by Chet. Is there any discussion on the motion? Anyone? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter? No? Okay, thank you. Mark? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Chet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes 4-1-0. See, let's see, now we're on the last part of item 5-5G, which is the 2021 deliberative session. That's at 5G. The next page, I believe.
So I just ask, I did want to make the board aware that the Goffstown School District has set their deliberative session for in-person on Saturday, January 30th at 10:00 AM with a snow date scheduled for Monday, February 1st at 7:00 PM. We have been working with the school on this issue and decided that use of the gymnasium at the high school will allow for the appropriate social distancing that would be required. And I have, for the board's information, provided you with an NHMA bulletin. I'm not seeing it in there, so I might have to send it out. I thought it, it doesn't look like it's in mine. But it, it had guidance for NHMA for temporary optional town meeting procedures, basically remote deliberative sessions. I'll give you the, the quick version. The town or the moderator would be able to declare that it is not safe to hold in-person deliberative session. And what that would do is the governing body would present an informational session through GTV, internet, Facebook, that kind of thing. And then residents would be able to participate by then sending in questions to the governing body. And seven days later, the governing body would review those questions. And the governing body would determine the final wording of the warrant to appear on town voting day. So there wouldn't be a traditional deliberative session where people get together to, to talk about the warrant articles. The only concern I have is if you were to go fully remote and set it as the governing body, the first question that goes on the alternative ballot is, do you approve of the governing body choosing the alternative voting method where you don't do your, your deliberative session? If the majority of voters vote no on that, all, every single warrant article fails at that point. That would include any special articles for Crispin House Main Street, but also our two collective bargaining agreements. And then the other big one is the appropriation from the EMS Special Revenue Fund. Any cost for ambulance would not come out of the Special Revenue Fund. You would have to tax for that. So my concern would be is if you follow that, that method, that alternative method that's allowed under HB 1129, you, you risk, you risk quite a bit. I think working with the school and in the gymnasium, we can provide for proper social distancing and do quick, quick discussions of the articles, be able to answer people's questions. Let, let the town operate under the deliberative session as we have been over the last 20-plus years.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, this is Chad. I just have a question for Derek. Derek, I hear you loud and clear on that concern. I wasn't aware of that, and so that's helpful to know. I guess so certain people will make the decision if we go with an in-person meeting to come out, ask their questions and things like that. Is there any room for us to allow those who would like to ask questions but, but will not go because of concerns for safety? For them to ask the questions? Because I think the goal, I think we all agree, the goal is the more, the more that people can participate, the better. So that, that's really my question is, is there a way for those who choose not to go to still be able to ask questions during the meeting if we choose to do this in person?
I would have to reach out to legal counsel and I will do that and try and get an answer for you. Again, when you are at the deliberative session, you are checking in that you are a registered voter in the town or that you're maybe a non-resident that just wants to watch, kind of off to the side. So I'm not certain how we would operate with people participating remotely when we don't have the opportunity to verify whether they're a registered voter or not. So I will have to reach out to legal counsel and ask them about that specific question.
Right, Derek, sorry, just, I'm sorry, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, follow up, Chad.
Just the follow-up would be if we were to go the alternate, the alternate route, there would have to be a way for us to do that, correct?
I don't want to speak for Derek.
It wasn't very clear in the NHMA guidance about that. It basically allowed you about a week to gather those electronic questions and respond to them. Again, you weren't, you weren't having people vote by proxy or anything like that. It was just an opportunity for the public to give the select board their feedback. And then ultimately, it would be the select board that decides what the warrant is based on what level of, I guess, weight they gave to each individual comment and how it came in.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Other questions from other board members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kelly?
Thank you. Derek, would any of those options move the deadline for petition articles?
No, none of those, none of those, none of the option, whether you go with a traditional deliberative session as I've recommended or the alternative would change the submission date for petition articles.
Okay, thank you.
Seems to me as though the traditional method, as long as we can get into the gymnasium with adequate distancing and protective measures, that seems like the safest and easiest way to go. Other board members want to comment?
I agree, but to Chet's point, I think that would be great for us to be able to communicate effectively to people who don't want to attend in person.
Yeah. Derek, did anything else you can offer in how to deal with those who don't want to show up in person, but wanna?
No, but I think, no, no, I don't immediately have an answer for that. I think we need to do probably a little bit of research and see what some of the other towns, especially those that had the traditional meetings or may have had an SB2 meeting in May. I'm not sure how many of those are actually out there, but to see how they dealt with that issue of those, those residents that don't want to, don't feel safe going to deliberative session, but still want to participate in some method. So I can reach out and see if we can get some answers to that and then also talk to legal about how we could even make that happen within the current framework that's allowed.
Okay, Derek, so if we lay this on the table and bring it back in our meeting on the 28th, does that create a problem for us?
That does not, no. That's still, that's still plenty of time. We've kind of done a, advised the school that we would be looking for Tuesday, February 2nd with a snow date of Thursday, February 4th. So we've already provided them that information. So laying this on the table until the 28th causes no issues.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. We'll lay this on the table. We'll revisit it during our meeting on the 28th. That takes care of item five in your packet. Now we're down to item six, which is the department updates. Derek, do you have anything for town administration?
No, the town hall remains open. Everybody's doing well and we've got a deadline for tax bills is Friday, the 18th. tax bills is Friday, the 18th. So we are open eight to four for those residents that want to come in and pay it in person. We also have a drop box out back in the rear vestibule that we're checking a couple of times a day. For those that don't feel comfortable, want to just drop it in the drop box.
Great. Chief Allen, do you have anything for the fire department or the EOC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we continue to watch all the latest information with regards to COVID and specifically with the vaccine coming out. I'll wait for information on the state to see the availability of that for our first responders. Internally, at the fire department, we all remain healthy and safe, continuing to meet the needs of the community through this pandemic, even as our cough line continues to rise. That's all I have.
Oh, thank you. Adam, DPW, do you have a department update?
I sure do. So looking like we've put the finishing touches on the majority of the planning for 2020. I can get you a finalized list here pretty soon when I start putting the numbers together for 2021. But it's looking like we've accomplished addressing just over 8% of the total road network in town. So that's pretty darn good. And up from, I think we were down around 3% or 4% when our budget was in a tough spot a few years back. So 8%, if you do the quick math, that's about a 12, 13-year return cycle. Some of that squared, I just double counted because we reclaim one year and overlay the next. So the reclaimed streets get counted a little extra. But even if it's at a 6% or 7% of the network, that's pretty good. So if we can move our return cycle to less than 20 years, I think that's, that's average to shoot for. So we're staying on track there. We have some rail trail work, as you might remember, from Mr. Pierce. A few months back, he'd asked for us to Roger up for a little assistance. So we've got the little stretch between the town line and where the Goffstown runs on the rail trail into, into City of Manchester. It's about 800 feet. So we've got that little stretch to bring in some gravel, some knit pack and rebrick. It's going to start tomorrow, assuming the weather supports. We have also some seasonals, as you heard, and full-timer starting, one started today, and we've got two starting next week. We do still have two positions that remain open, so actively trying to fill those and interview folks to get those positions filled. And then two items kind of related to the encumbrance list, the encumbrance list that you've already seen tonight. My question is on Merrill Road. We have the project for this year. Initially, CIP had budgeted Merrill Road as a engineering this year and construction next year. A brief visit with one of our on-call engineers on site. We kind of thought that maybe the construction worklist was a little, was a little big for what was really needed. And we had them on site for about a half an hour, 45 minutes to take a look. And they tend to agree. So rather than spend $27,000 on a full design, we've, we've got a work list kind of from that meeting that we can go ahead and just general contract out this work to, a guardrail contractor, and then some concrete repairs, and a little bit of asphalt. What I would like to do is get started early with the 2020 funds instead of putting that into engineering. So the request would be to encumber that with our guardrail contractor. It'll be a little more than that because of the, the way the bridge rail and the approaches are, what they cost these days. But I should be able to chip away at the 2021 construction number. So hopefully I can get that in time for a budget hearing. We can whittle down our CIP a bit, too. And what I'm saying, Merrill Road is a wooden deck bridge, and it's got wooden guardrail. The contractors now are pretty leery about working on or installing wooden rail. The road is a 25 mile an hour road, so we could do it if you wanted to, but it's not as safe. And we'd have to find a new guardrail contractor because our current one doesn't do it or warranty the work, both for craftsmanship, but also for safety of vehicles. So what I'd like to propose over there is instead of raising and repairing the wooden rail, to switch to a powder coated, but a brown rail that you might see around, you know, a state park or something like that. It's a little bit more aesthetic, costs a little bit more money, of course, being powder coated, but matches the idea of the scenic road and the rustic nature of the bridge. So I just didn't want to swap over from a wooden rail to a powder coated painted rail without talking to the board first and see if anybody has any thoughts or, or a problem with that plan before we go forward on that.
Well, let me pose a question. Any board members have any comments relative to what I've just presented relative to the guardrails?
Well, it seems to me if the contract, can I say something?
Go ahead, Peter.
It seems to me if the contractors, the guardrail contractors don't want to do it for the stability and liability issues like. Thank God, just go ahead and make it. Best I can, I think you could probably do it with a color, a brown color or a bronze color.
I think I got most of what you said, Pete. I personally don't have a problem with that, that going in that direction with a powder coated metal rail. But Peter, do you want to follow up on that? You're breaking up a little bit, so I'm not sure I heard everything that you were saying.
No, I'm good. That's just, we're going to do something about this breaking up. I'm breaking up. Kelly's breaking up.
Callus, I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thank you.
Callus, this is Mark. I'm in favor of that.
Thank you, Mark. Any other board members want to weigh in on that specific issue relative to the guardrail? All right, I think you have the direction, Adam.
Okay, thank you. So I'll plan to keep that encumbrance in there, and then we'll work to get a final number so we'll know how much of 2021 funds to add on to that $27,000. And then we'll, we'll speak to the concrete folks and make sure that does the whole project. But I should be able to get you a revised construction number for 21 down significantly from them. Appreciate that. The second item that's in there, we just, by the, by the way, the 2020, 2019, rather, signal project went, we didn't have time at the end of the year to finish that project, assess, and move forward on the traffic signals that, for 2020, the Daniel Plummer signal in particular. We had worked at Pinard Street intersection last, and that project got carried forward into 2020. So by the time that construction was done, we have a few concerns going forward on, on other projects. So we didn't get a chance to get the 2020 work on Daniel Plummer bid out. We have met with our, our East Coast Signals, who does all, most of our on-call and emergency work and regular repairs. And they've, they've assured us that we could do the work at that intersection under that $45,000 CIP amount, but we just haven't put it up to bid. So I'd asked Danielle if she could earmark the funds for, for the encumbrance discussion, so we don't lose it. But if the board is not comfortable with encumbering, the problem is we have to have a contract or a vendor name in. So can't just encumber to no vendor into 2021 and then bid it in 21. So, you know, kind of late in the game, if we have to lose a majority of it, so be it. I can, I can place some orders for equipment from a few different vendors and try to get pulls and buttons and all that. But if we want to bring any of this money into 21, I'd need a vendor assigned to it. So that's why I requested she put in the East Coast Signals.
Okay.
Callus, I'm in favor of putting that money to the East Coast Signals, as Adam suggested, so we don't lose it.
Yeah, any other board members? I agree with that. Any other board members want to weigh in on that? Yeah, I don't want to lose that money.
I can also give you a bid. I believe it'd be a non-public reputation related. I can give you a bit more info on what we're down with 2019, too, if you'd like.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from board members? Okay, Adam, you got enough direction on that one?
I do. Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
See, police department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board. We're, we're doing well. Status quo from the PD side. We, all, operations are still fully in effect. We have one in quarantine, but so far, so good. We are also still down two. We're making progress with that. We're seeing some good turnout with applicants. So hopefully by the end of the month here and into January, we'll have a couple names. And on the good news, we've decided to, we had a long conversation with the Hillsborough County Nursing Home and tried to sponsor a kind of a, the cards for Christmas event where we're going to try to have the town folks give Christmas cards to all the residents in our nursing home to kind of give them a little bit of a smile on their face. We started off with just the Hillsborough County Nursing Home. We had a long conversation with them to make sure that we are following their protocols for safety-wise. And after three days, we've had, out of 324 residents, we only have 35 left. This wonderful community has, has stepped up once again, and they've been dropping these cards in the box outside of our agency for Officer Palatier to bring over and hopefully bring some joy to those residents in that facility after a really long, tough year. And if it's going that well, we might try to reach out a little bit more to some of the other nursing homes in our community. But that's where we started. It's the largest one in the state. So we figured we'd kind of try to spread some joy. It's been a really good, good result thus far. So that's some really good news on our side. And other than that, that's, that's where we're at.
That's, that's great news, Chief. You'd be commended for taking that initiative. That, that's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate it. We're here to help. And that's, hopefully we can get all 324 residents. That's the goal.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for the board members for Chief Serena? Mark to Rick. Rick, are you with us still?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's fine. We're all doing well. Programatically, we might be able to get a middle school basketball program for boys and girls, grades five through eight. It's looking pretty promising. Still got to do a couple little final things here and there. But that will, if it's a go, it'll start the 16th of January, do a six-week program, and then some playoffs. So we're crossing our fingers on that and hoping that's well. Other than that, we're all set. Eric, on behalf of my wife and myself, thank you very, very, very much for doing the cards. My mother-in-law will absolutely love it. Thank you very much. I'm all done. Have a good night.
You're welcome, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. How about the library? Is anybody from the library with us? Or Kelly, you're going to report for them? Kelly, anything from the library you're aware of? Are you muted, Kelly?
It looks like Kelly just dropped off.
Yeah, I have text issues, phone issues.
Okay. Well, we'll pass over that for tonight. I think that wraps up the department updates. Select board discussion. I didn't, I didn't see an action matrix in my packet. Anybody get one?
No, there was not one in the packet. I did not get a report on vehicles out, and there were no real changes from your, your action matrix on the 7th of December.
Okay, thank you.
The chair?
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Chair, yeah, I'd like to discuss possible mandating all masks in the town public buildings, town public free fire. And town hall library. Everybody else?
I'm pretty sure.
You're proposing that we mandate public masks in all public buildings. What are the members of the board think?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is Chad.
Go ahead, Chad.
In looking, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that already covered by the governor's order? Or am I, am I incorrect on that?
No, I don't think the governor's order mandates anything. Mandates means you must do it. Otherwise, there will be consequences. So if you're going to mandate something, you better have an enforcement plan in place as well as penalties for failure to follow the mandate. And I don't think we're in that position. At least I'm not. I think we're getting great compliance voluntarily from folks. And I think to take that extra step to say you absolutely must do it or else, I think is a step too far for me.
I disagree, Paul. I disagree with what you just said because.
Was that Chad or Pete?
That was Pete.
Okay, we need to fix this, Derek. This is terrible.
Pete, can you call in? I will text you the number for the call-in number. Can you call in?
Yeah, it's coming, too.
Yeah, Pete, yours is the only one I'm having problems with.
Hey, Callus?
Yep, Eric?
I'm pretty sure, I want to say, fire and police are already doing the mask mandate in the stations. I've been into the fire station several times, and they've all had their mask on. Police, I, I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure they're the same, they're under the same pretense of wearing the mask. I'm not sure about DPW, but I just, I don't think we need to force it down their throat yet. We're not, we're not that bad. This is the way I look at it.
Yeah, that, that's my, my thought on this, Mark. And I think we need to be careful when we talk about the word mandate, because I don't believe individual departments can mandate actions. I think it has to come from the governing body. Is that right, Derek?
Well, yes. And I think all departments right now are following the governor's emergency order. His emergency order was all persons over the age of five within the state of New Hampshire shall wear masks or cloth face coverings covering their noses and mouth anytime they are in public spaces, indoors or outdoors, where they are unable to, to or do not consistent, consistently maintain a physical, physical distance of at least six feet. So I think that might be the only area where we don't have compliance is when somebody is able to maintain physical compliant, or physical distance of at least six feet. So we have some offices, at least, I'll speak for town hall. We do have some offices at town hall where they are able to be on their own, be at their own desk. And then maybe if somebody comes into their office, they'll put a mask on at that point. But, and I, I know from what I've heard at town hall, 99% of the people coming into the building are wearing a mask. We make masks available. There may have been instances here and there of somebody that does not wear a mask, that will, will drop something at one of the counters. And I think that's, again, fortunate that we have those barriers, those physical barriers up. But that's kind of where we are right now. I think the only other maybe potential area concern is we still, if there are any, any boards or committees that are still meeting in person. For the majority of those meeting, almost everybody is moving, meeting remotely on WebEx. But if anyone is meeting in person, we would have to, I can remeasure out the meeting room here in room 106 to ensure there is physical distance of at least six feet. And then maybe suggest that they probably should be wearing a mask if they're going to be there for elongated time, because we just, in this room, there isn't a whole lot of changeover of air, even, even with the fans and HVAC going. There's not a huge changeover in air while somebody's meeting here.
Yeah, I can tell you, just anodally, as I'm out about and around town, whether I'm in public places, it appears to me as though the percentage of people wearing masks has gone up considerably over the last couple of weeks, probably due to the skyrocketing rate of, of the infection rate. But it certainly seems to me like there's a high, high percentage of people wearing masks when they're out and about. And I, again, I personally don't want to, I think, create a mandate, again, to reiterate, is a step too far for me.
Can we see what the fire chief's going to say?
Sure.
Chief, do you have any suggestions or comments? Or are we doing things right or wrong?
I think all departments are doing their best they can. I think exactly what the town administrator said, we're following the governor's guidelines. I think all the department heads, we're in constant communication, and we all have kind of the same approach. We are wearing masks within our organizations, and especially if social distancing cannot be adhered to, we have them on. At the fire department, we certainly all have individual offices, so we're able to keep that social distancing. But if we are in the same room, we do put masks on or in the same office. So I think we're doing a good job now.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Chief. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to echo what you said about the enforcement piece. That, that piece in particular is the most troubling. I've seen people are wearing I've seen people are wearing masks, you know, around Goffstown willingly. I believe that most people understand the social responsibility at this point to do so. So, so really, the enforcement piece alone gives me a lot of pause on, on recommending a mandate.
Yeah, I can see that being very problematic. And what's the penalty going to be? You know, what's the penalty, and how you're going to collect on the penalties, whatever it might be? It just, lots of administrative issues if we figure that route. Any other board members want to chime in on this? No. Uh, let's see, is Kelly, oh, we lost Kelly, didn't we? We lost Peter as well. Well, I'm not getting the real consensus on this. So suggestions? I, I don't want to take this any further.
Let's table that. Callus, let's just table it for now.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll table it, we'll bring it back up on the 28th again. Peter and Kelly are back with us. Okay, so we'll table that one as well. I think that's all of the department updates. There is no action matrix. Any, any other new business or old business that members of the board want to bring up? Because we do have to go into non-public.
Callus, I got one thing for you.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
The budget committee has met consecutively for like four or five weeks in a row. We have completed the budget pretty much. The only thing we have left is sewer and special projects and things like that. But for the most part, I believe we will finish up everything tomorrow night with a, with a good chance, and we should be moving on. Is that correct, Derek, without, without getting too far into it?
Yeah, I would anticipate they're going to finish up with, they have the sewer budget to go over tomorrow night and special articles. And then they have the two water precincts, but I would anticipate they'd be able to finish those up tomorrow night and go to public hearing on January 12th. Again, similar to deliberative talking with the school district, we are going to do an in-person budget hearing at the high school gymnasium on January 12th.
Great, thanks for the update.
That's all I got, Callus.
Okay, thanks. So I'm going to ask for a second public comment. Is there anybody who would like to comment at this time? This is your opportunity for providing public comment. Derek, do you see anybody on the lines?
No.
Okay, we do need to go into non-public session.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we win the non-public session, R S A 91- A, colon, three, two, colon, A for compensation and discipline, and B hiring.
I'll second that.
And a second by Chad, was it?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we'll call, yes, Kelly, are you there? Peter is here. No, Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chad?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes three, zero.
Oh, Callus? Callus, we do have Kelly, she's on the telephone line.
Okay. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay, I think they're here to say yes. So, so that, so now motion to go into non-public passes four, zero, zero. Thank you. So we're going to go into non-public session, going to sign off the public portion of the meeting tonight. Thank you, everyone, for, for tuning in and watching. Please stay healthy, stay safe. Looks like there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we'll see you next time. Thank you, have a good evening.